Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the, what is today, November the 17th, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. If you stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Fusch will lead us to the pledge.
Go ahead, we'll bow with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon this county, this community of ours, this great state and this great country that we live in. We ask that you guide us this evening, help us to do the right thing for the county, the community, the citizens involved. We ask that you look over all of our law enforcement, our firemen, our EM, all those that take care of us on a day-to-day basis. We ask that everyone here have a safe try at home this evening and all these things in Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Peaches, I am Mike, and I state to America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, divisible to redeem justice for all.
Thank you. If I could please silence your cell phones during the meeting. Gentlemen, if y'all can check your phones and thing. We do have all five commissioners present tonight for 100% quorum. Gentlemen, you've also had a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting from November 3rd. If there are no amendments to that document, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve passes 5-0. We've also had an opportunity to review the agenda for tonight. If there are no additions or amendments to the existing agenda, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most approve the agenda as submitted, past 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on December 6th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in these chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Mr. Douglas and he will provide a request to speak form for you to fill out and they will put you on the agenda for their meeting. We're less formal in this setting. If you have something that you'd like to add to any of the presentations during our public hearing, raise your hand and we'll call you up and ask you to take three to five minutes to give us your position, either for or against the item being presented. We do have an opportunity, if you have an item that you would like to get on the record that does have, it has nothing to do with anything on the agenda tonight, but you still like to get that statement on the record for the Commissioners to review, please raise your hand and we'll call you up and again, give you three to five minutes at the dais there to make your presentation. That being said, we'll move right into tonight's Action Pact Agenda. We've got two items for information only. Mr. Butler, file MW22-10-03.
Hello, Sheriff, this is a minor waiver for Six Champions Parkway. It's to reduce the rear setback on the property. Shows location of the property off of Champions Parkway behind the gate and we're looking at a lot highlighted there in red. Also, current zoning is planning a development. And the reduction was for a pool at the back of the property, reducing the 50-foot rear setback down to 45 feet through until November 9th. Please, our staff, uh, based on this.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Douglas, we have filed MW22-11-01, 459 Creek Ridge for information only.
Yes, sir, yeah, this is another minor waiver, like you said, for 459 Creek Ridge. It's a third of an acre lot. This shows both the location, south of the pass and west of Furious Ferry. It's also zoned plan unit development. We're looking at the lot highlighted in red near the bottom of the image. I would draw your attention to the northwestern property line where the space between the house and the property line is shown to be 9.55 feet in length. The property setback for this lot is supposed to be 10 feet. And so, minor waiver was to approve a reduction of that setback from 10 feet to 9 feet. And that was approved on November 3rd.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, if you have any questions on either one of these minor waivers? All right, thank you. We do have a massage operator's license for consideration tonight. Mr. Butler?
Yeah, this is Lisa Anne Kessler. She's doing business as Evans Therapeutic Massage from a property at 326 Connor Circle. This is for mobile massage only. She would be using this location for administrative, her administrative office. She means all requirements, the ordinance staff recommends approval.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any questions? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for mobile massage services for a Evans therapeutic massage.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approved passes 5-0. Mr. Butler, we've got a, uh, excuse, Mr. Douglas, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself here. We had a temporary use for 48, or excuse me, 4,008 Highland Pond Road.
Uh, yes, sir, this is a temporary use to approve a travel trailer to remain on a property while the applicant and resident, Ms. Melissa Bookman, completes the renovations necessary to a structure on the site for her to dwell in it as a permanent residence. Uh, this shows the current residential agriculture or RA zoning and the location of the site just north of Wrightsboro Road on Highland Pond Road. Um, if you see here circled, it's difficult to see, it blends in with the trees a little bit, but there is an existing travel trailer there already present on the property that the applicant, Ms. Bookman, will make use of for the approved 12-month window of the temporary use while she works on the structure marked there by the address, 4,008. That building, she is seeking to make all the renovations necessary, again, to dwell in as a permanent residence, minus any renovations that she'll need a contractor to complete, such as electrical or plumbing work. And staff is recommending approval of this temporary use.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Butler? Butler, Mr. Douglas? Thank you. Uh, this is not a public hearing, so I need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization at 4008 Highland Pond Road.
Do you hear a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve passes 5-0. Mr. Butler, now we'll go to you.
All right.
Temporary use at 3612 Mistletoe Road.
Sheriff, this is a request for temporary use for mobile home, new construction of a new home, 3612 Mistletoe Road. Shows location of the property just off Mistletoe Road. Now, the property currently is R4. So what they're looking to do, they're, they applied for a building permit to build a house here. Uh, they do have an existing single wide there. They intend to live in the single wide while they build the house on the property, then remove the single wide once they are finished. Staff recommends approval of their request.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Okay, uh, this is not a public hearing. I need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization for 3612 Mistletoe Road.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approved passes 5-0. Uh, Ms. Mystery, we've got a plan revision, file RZ22-11-02. Will be a public hearing?
Yes. So this is a major plan revision to the current S1 zoning. Location is 2221 Indigo Hall Drive on a parcel that's 10.5 acres. Here is the location, north of Furious Ferry Road and adjacent to Indigo Hall Drive. This is an S1 zoning currently. Um, it was one of seven parcels that were rezoned to S1 in 2015 for senior retirement community, memory care and independent living and independent apartments as well. Here is the aerial. That the, the yellow outline is the full extent of the S1 zoning. This is the one parcel that's 10.5 acres in red and that's the one that we're looking at, the major revision for tonight's request. Here is the plat of the property from the original plan. The road did move over north of the image that you can see. So this parcel was replanted at 10.5 acres and that is one of the reasons there's a decrease in density as well. Here is a photograph of the existing site. Entrance to the Thrive Community is from Furious Ferry Road. Another photograph that shows the access road coming in from Furious Ferry and then continuing around this parcel and going down to the Thrive Assisted Living, which is already built. More photographs, there's the barn with the horses to the left of this site and then the Thrive Assisted Living Development, which is completed and functioning at the end of the Indigo Hall Drive. This is the 2017 plan that was revised at the time. Um, it shows the different uses on the properties. The 2017 revision shifted some of the uses and added the medical offices. That's the yellow, in yellow, along Furious Ferry. The parcel we're looking at is this one. So the current proposal is for a building that's in the shape of a letter H you can see there. Um, there is a 15-foot drop across this property. Um, that's why the architect has designed it with a three-story section that's adjacent to the R3 residential and the fourth-story section is adjacent to Indigo Hall Drive, which is the internal road through the site. Um, so keeping the four-story away from the R3 part. Um, one of the, can you go back to that one for a second? Um, one of the requests is for the parking spaces to be revised from 10 by 18 to 9 by 18. This is meets the county code, so that's not a concern for this request. Um, this is the, the building section. You can see where the three-story is on the right and the four-story on the left as well. And you can see the heights that have been proposed. So if you count the ground floor at the three-story section, the top of the roof is at 56 inches. This is a bit more detail drawing showing the building heights. You can see that the building height, as measured, measured based on the definition in the code, uh, which is from the average grade, would put the building, the roof height at a fraction over 56. This is a zoning map that was presented by the applicant. They have shown where the R3, which is in yellow, the residential zoning does, county code does allow maximum building height to be 55 feet. Typically, most houses are not built to that height, but that is what's allowed by county code. The S1 zoning, um, that was adopted in 2015 with the master plan, um, set a limit of 35 feet on the S1 parcels. And the 2017 revision allowed the 40 feet on the, the front. And this parcel is restricted to the 35 from the original zoning. Here are the renderings of the independent living facility that will be built here. And this is some of the architecture examples from the area that the architect has used to come up with this design. Uh, the future land use map, this parcel is on the Furious Ferry Professional Corridor. The use is our neighborhood. Since this was already rezoned for independent living apartments, still consistent with the overall use. As we mentioned, the density does go, go down slightly and with the increase in the acreage of the parcel, um, going from 180 units to 173 is a reduction of 20 units per acre, going down to 16 units per acre. So staff is recommending approval to the major S1 revision to decrease the density, increase the height of the independent apartments with conditions. And these are, first one came from the stormwater department. Should any part of the independent living section of Thrive also knows that Indigo Hall fall under the definition of a critical facility defined by FEMA or Columbia County, the facility shall meet the provisions set forth Columbia County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 42, Section 4246, standard for critical facilities, um, shall not be located in the 100-year flood plain or the 500-year flood plain. All ingress and egress from any critical facility must be protected to the 500-year flood elevation. Also, based on the Fire Marshal's requirements, slight modifications to that plan will be allowed during the plan review stage to achieve the required compliance that they need. Also, buffers may be disturbed and supplemented with additional plantings as required to create an opaque screen and must be designed by a landscape architect. Staff recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. It's hard to believe it's been seven years we first rezoned this property. Uh, gentlemen, this is, uh, do you have any questions for staff? Uh, this is a public hearing, is the applicant here? Yes, sir, is there anything you'd like to come forward and add to Nina's presentation? Please give us your name and home address.
Uh, Rob Mirhead, I'm applicant with Winter Pass Capital Partners. Thank you for your consideration. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Okay, I think we're good right now. We may call you back up. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ221102, major S1 revision to increase the building height and reduce the cloud density at 2221 Indigo Hall Drive.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approved passes 5-0. Mr. Douglas, uh, we've got a conditional use for massage, file RZ22-11-03.
Uh, yes, sir, this is a conditional use for massage application for 108 North Belair Road. It's a one and one-third acre property, zoned C2. This shows the location of the property, west of North Belair Road and north of Columbia Road. Um, again, as stated, the current zoning is C2. Uh, this is an aerial view of the building. It's already in use. Uh, there's multiple suites within the building and they're being used for professional office or commercial uses per the zoning. Uh, this is a as-built and plat for the location. And this is the existing site as is now. Um, this is a, an image of the future land use map or vision 2035 map for Columbia County. Um, it shows, it's hard to see because it's red on red, but just in that exact same spot and orientation to the intersection, um, that the property is within an activity center. Such activity centers are used for things that the building is already zoned and in use for, such as professional use. Um, the staff is recommending approval of this massage license, given the condition that this will be the only suite in the building allowed to operate and offer massage services.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, is the applicant here? Is there anything like you all would like to come forward and add? All right, thank you very much. Uh, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conditional use for massage at 108 North Belair Road.
Do you hear a second? With conditions?
Conditions.
Okay, second still hold with conditions?
Thank you.
Motion been made in second, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, file RZ22-11-04, R1 to S1.
Sheriff's request for a rezonation, R1 to S1 at 3981 Mulliken Road for a portion of property. It's 2.6 acres, currently zoned R1 for a neighborhood clubhouse amenity. Shows location of the property near the end of Mulliken Road, next to the river. Also, the location showing, um, the area here is Timber Creek subdivision, which was approved for a concept plan, I believe, back in July. About 51 units and the approximate clubhouse location shown here. Uh, one of the reasons this is for y'all is that a little different, that you don't, you normally have a clubhouse within, within a development. You can all look over here at Sumter Landing, theirs is within it, this is outside of it. Um, they also are going to build it before the actual neighborhood is built, so it's one that it can definitely have some essentially negative impacts for it to be zoned as R1 instead of an S1. This is the property again, currently zoned R1. And you have some R1A RCO with Sumter Landing, excuse me, Sumter Landing, then R2 and R3 and R1 in its surrounding area. There's a review of the property and the existing site. Also, the plat of the property. And the overall concept, so what you have here is the 5,000 square foot clubhouse with a pickleball court, which you kind of know there on the property. It's not highly visible. I do have access from the Timber Creek neighborhood here, but also off of Mulliken Road with a private drive that goes to it and also will go to the owner's home at the end of it there. Uh, you also have parking for about 50 parking spaces on the property. They would have 150 people would, would be able to use this site. You have access to the walking trails to go throughout the, the property itself. Um, one of the things too with this, it will be operated by the HOA. Um, they will be able to control the, how it, how it operates and what can go in there, um, overall. Again, not necessarily different, but it is kind of how they're operating it. Um, in terms of future land use, is, is within the neighborhood's area, character area. Um, again, like I said before, a clubhouse is pretty common to have within this area, also within a development. Um, this is again, not technically within the development itself, it is adjacent to it. Uh, with staff sees no issues with the request. Overall, staff recommends approval with the following condition from the Health Department, uh, facility must be connected to sewer if available. Staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Thank you. This is a public hearing, is the applicant here? Yes, sir, is there anything you'd like to add to the presentation? Right, I don't believe we do. Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning?
Is sewer available?
I'm Bill Porter with Blue Water Engineering, 4210 Columbia Road, Martinez. I'm the project engineer. Uh, sewer is available in Sumter Landing, uh, which places it today a little bit remote from this property. So, you know, today is there a way for them to go out and make a physical connection to the sewer for the clubhouse? No, sewer will have to be extended, um, from Sumter Landing. So we're in the process of doing the development plans for the neighborhood now. Um, and that will also include provisions to get sewer connection uh, to the clubhouse area and to Mr. Cotter's house. Uh, it was mentioned that the plan is to build the clubhouse prior to the neighborhood. So it's possible that when the clubhouse is built initially, that sewer's not there. So we may be looking at a short-term temporary septic system. Um, uh, but it may be possible that we get the sewer in to the clubhouse before it's constructed as well. So there's an option. But the long-term plan is that it would definitely be on public sewer.
Does that answer your questions?
Sure.
All right, thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any other questions, Mr. Porter? Thank you, sir. And this is a public hearing, is there anyone I'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file RZ22-11-04, rezoning from 3981.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Most to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Mystery, we've got a variation tonight, file VA22-11-02.
Yes, sir, this is a variation request and the location is 4130 Columbia Road on 3.5 acres. The current zoning of the parcel is C2 general commercial and there's an existing house on the property. The variation is to allow overhead doors on the elevations facing Columbia Road. Here is the location. You see that the property is kind of like a triangle shape. And this is the zoning map showing the C2 and C2 around it and then R3 residential just to the south of it. And the corridor protection overlay is the hatch, um, hatch designer you can see on the map. Here's a close-up of the aerial that shows where the existing house is located, right there. And here is the plat of the property. Some of the site photographs, this is looking, um, this way is looking east. And the other direction looking west and then the house on the property. For, for the context of the, the parcel, right opposite is the Regent's Bank. See, there is a kind of a brick structure, classical design. Um, just to the adjacent parcel of the bank is the public storage facility that's just recently completed. And you can see that these properties match the corridor protection overlay district requirements. This is the concept plan submitted by the applicant. It is a concept, it's not the, the plan may change if this goes ahead, uh, but they do show the building set this way and this is the section where the overhead doors will be located. Close-up of the concept plan. Um, one of the advantages of having the doors facing Columbia Road in this case is that at the back, there are no doors or openings. And so, um, for the residential, there's a bit more privacy and security for them there. And then a 50, but 50, sorry, a 30-foot buffer is required between the C2 and the R3. Uh, the applicant has suggested that their overhead doors might have an idea similar to this. And they've sent us a rendering of a prototype of a Mavis Discount Tire Store. Um, it's got painted block finish, so that would not be acceptable in this location, especially with the variance that they're requiring. So they are in the process of coming up with a new design for this location. So they're asking for, to table this request until December 15th. So the request is a table.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Any questions, staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Okay, um, since this has been advertised, we'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing. So if you've got anything you'd like to add for the record, we'll go ahead, yes, ma'am. Uh, we'll go ahead and add that tonight, but I would, hang on just a minute, please. I know you're anxious. Um, I would, would suggest that you would come back for the 15th in case there's a change in what they've submitted over what they've got here tonight. So anyway, but let you go ahead, come forward, give us your name and home address.
I'm at Tanner and I'm at 104 Reed Creek Road. And I am very concerned about this property being like it is. And I'm sorry, I was out of town in, for the November hearing when all this happened. But I get a tremendous runoff from Ms. Graves' property. That's who owned it when we bought our house, where my backyard ends up flooding. And so, having a concrete situation like this is very concerning to me because that's going to be more runoff for water and stuff coming into my yard.
Mr. Sterling, Mr. Butler, would y'all care to address how runoff's handled when we engineer a site like this?
Sure. So there's a pond that'll be put on the property to, to basically collect stormwater, uh, from that and they can't.
Where's the pond located, may I, I mean?
Are there?
So that's basically right behind my house.
Now, again, this isn't, you know, official and done yet. But again, they can't have any increase in the stormwater leaving the site than what it currently is. They can't dump more water out than they're currently, than they currently are.
So what happens if it does happen? I bought my house in 1996, okay? I know none of y'all are on the board, but God bless Columbia County people. New part of Spring Lake, because they did not do proper rating or whatever. I literally would have a rain and I would walk out into my front yard. In 1996 and now, I have fought the water problem in my house. And I finally got my front yard where I don't have a flood anymore regardless of the rain. I'm still getting some flooding issues in my backyard, which comes off of that property.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but I would assume that when engineering- I don't want to speak out of turn, but I would assume that when engineering's done on this, this may solve this young lady's problem.
Well, my understanding, because I'm on Spring Lake's Facebook page.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if any other Spring Lakes people are here. But my understanding is the water department actually came out and looked at some of this a couple of days ago. They said that if this happens, we are going to be flooded.
I don't believe that.
I don't believe that.
Well, come to my house after
Would that be
I'm not talking about that. I don't believe the water department made that statement.
Well, I'm just saying, I didn't say I said it. I said it was on the Facebook.
They can't design this to throw water off on you like that. That's why they're putting the detention pond in there is to solve your problem. So I would suggest that to deal with, with Mr. Sterling or Mr. Butler, so they can address your issue when these people come in
Okay.
for the redesign. Would that be, would that be reasonable?
And I would think I would go so far as to say, if you can look at the concept, and certainly we've identified that that may have some tweaks here or there. But by the looks of it, it has curve and gutter, so it's intended to capture that stormwater. And as Mr. Butler indicated, it would funnel it towards that detention pond. And part of what that will do is retain that water until such, you know, it releases it at an appropriate rate.
Releases it where?
And that's what we're going, and that's part of the, the next step is to make sure that we identify where exactly that's getting released to so that it does not impact adjacent properties, because that is the intent of stormwater management, is to manage it and then release it in an appropriate
Would that go to the storm sewer? Would that go down to Spring Lake, or where would that go?
Well, fortunately, I'm not an engineer, so I can't answer that question. But I think what we have figured out is that we have some concern, and we will be certainly addressing that with the stormwater management folks who do do that review as part of the ultimate site plan application.
Is there a way that we can put a condition, an additional condition in to handle this?
I think what we, what I would suggest is, is that we will take this feedback from tonight's public hearing and certainly work with the applicant to kind of maybe beef up and address that concern so that the submittal intended for the December 15th, if you decide to postpone, can hopefully address that concern in a little better light than just us kind of speculating on what that might look like.
And would that be stormwater utility? Would that be engineering services? Who would, who would help you with that?
Most likely, that's the point contact is going to be stormwater, but certainly our engineering folks are looking at it as well.
So Ms. Tanner, I got a question for you. Does it, so does the water come down and go across your property towards Columbia Road? Is that what it's doing?
Yeah.
It just comes out there and hangs out?
Comes off of Columbia Road from Ms. Graves' house, and my yard, plus Spring Lake's water. Brady Wright or whatever, it comes down my neighbor's yard.
Could you draw, could you draw?
You can draw.
You can actually draw on this?
Oh, I'm not an artist.
Oh, listen, I'm not either, but would you just draw arrows on there, kind of let us know what you're talking about?
That's her property. The one that has the orange.
My house is, yeah, at 104 Reed Creek.
Okay, got it.
So the water comes off of this, and it comes down this way. Then these houses right through here, that's where it comes, in my yard too.
Let me ask you this.
And when the, when the heavy rain hit, what was it, a couple of years ago when we had that real, real heavy rain? My neighbor's house totally flooded.
Let me ask you this question. That property's been, Ms. Graves has been gone from there for a long time.
About three years? I don't know how long.
I knew the family.
I used to
I knew the family well. Let me make my point. Now, all these years, let's call it 20 years, let's take the conversation. Nobody was complaining about the problems this piece of property was causing?
Oh, that's wrong.
I'm asking the question.
Miss, I went over to Ms. Graves', and we bought our house, and we found, found out the sellers of our house, Russ Hendricks, never informed us of a flood problem when we bought our house. You know, so we bought this house, and all of a sudden, we were inundated with water. Well, we went over to Ms. Graves' and Mr. Graves' and talked to them. They allowed us to go out and buy, is it called riffraff, the big rocks?
Riffraff.
And he said, yes, he had no problems with us coming on his yard, as long as, because it was a septic, it's a septic tank, I guess it still is. As long as we were careful of that, and we literally bought those riffraff and put all along the fence trying to help water flow, so it wouldn't come in so heavy. Well, over the years, that riffraff has kind of gotten covered up with everything. I mean, and no, Ms. Graves was very well aware of it, because she used to come to my house and eat dinner and stuff.
Well, my, my point being, after all these years, have you had that as a consistent problem?
I've had that as a
The last 20 years, but the county's never done anything about it.
The county has never done?
Have you ever asked the county?
I actually have a sewer drain in my front yard.
Have you ever asked the county to do anything?
Yes, I have. I have had the county come out there, and matter of fact, when the county came out, they weren't even aware of my next-door neighbor. They weren't even aware that behind his house, between two houses, there's sewage drain. They said, oh, there's not one out there, and I said, oh, yes, there is, because my neighbor used to go out there and keep it clean because Columbia County never did anything about it.
So you've had a 20-year problem?
I've had a 20-year problem with this house. And I have slowly gotten where my front yard is not a flood problem. I actually have a yard now. I actually have a grassed front yard now. And I work in my yard all the time trying to prevent
You realize that piece of property is not going to stay as is. Something's going to ultimately go there.
I know that. I'm not concerned about that. What I'm concerned about is when this property gets built, how's it going to affect my house and flooding, and then when it does
Anything that ought to improve, by what you're talking about.
If you put a bunch of concrete there, and you're taking away the trees, and you're taking away the, the, you know, vegetation that's on the ground there.
But they've got to change the grade to force the water to go somewhere else.
And if you're putting a retention pond in
But is, is a retention pond, is water going to stand in it? Then not only do I have that, now I'm going to be fighting a mosquito?
So you've got retention and detention. Would you, Mr. Sterling, would you mind?
It's going to come and go, it will not stay sitting still.
It won't stay sitting still?
No, I mean, it's not going to stay right in there.
Allow me to put my engineering hat on for a second. Which I don't have. I left it in the office. Retention is kind of a flush-and-go, detention, or, yeah, and detention is where you hold it.
Okay.
And, and release it at a rate that is not any more than what the pre-existing was. I think, you know, part of the, the issue that she's identified is, is anything in this area that may be, you know, creating a flooding issue is not the result of this one. However, the, the application before us, we, you know, these folks will have to address the stormwater from that site
No.
discharge. Yes, ma'am, that is how that works. So the fact is, is that we will work very diligently to take her comments and try and address that through this plan.
So things got
But I'm not saying, I'm saying that some of this water problem comes from Ms. Graves' house too.
Absolutely, and so this plan will help to alleviate that issue. And, and I'm not the engineer of this. They, they will have to do that, our folks will have to review that and make sure that it's in compliance with all state, local, and federal requirements.
Do our best on this side to make sure that no water leaves that property when they design it. So hopefully it'll help you, and I would suggest that, you know, do you know your commissioner, Don Skinner?
No.
I would say, let's meet afterwards, and I'll give you Don's number, and I'd call Don and, and ask him if he can get you some help in that particular area, because he used to live in Spring Lake, so he's probably familiar. So, so, but, but let's, let's talk afterwards if we can.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Rocko Sica, I'm a resident at 4141 Bentry Lane, one of the properties that abuts the rear lot here.
Fill your last name for us.
S I C A.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, I appreciate that you are planning on postponing the full hearing on this, given the fusion around the actual date and the fact that there was some discussion that this might be postponed to December 1st, since I'm here.
Fifteenth.
Uh, yeah, yes, but on, on the website, it was also recommended first. Just a few things, it is my belief, and forgive me that I probably don't know the ordinances anywhere near as well as you gentlemen do, that without this variance, this property will not be able to be built, largely because I have serious questions about the, the buffer zone and how they maintain it, whether they will actually install a structural barrier or keep the vegetation in place to maintain the required buffer zone. My understanding is that the ordinance not only require a sound barrier, which is a significant concern for the residents of Spring Lakes, given the, the nature of this facility, but also a visual barrier. And I would request that if, if this variance or this facility were to proceed, that the commission and you, as the planning commission, recommend the condition that a 10-foot physical barrier be put in place to limit some of the sound issues that might come from this facility, as well as to address the, the intention of maintaining the physical, the visual aspect of the Spring Lakes community.
Butler, would you like to address the?
So this is not a request to reduce the buffer. This is a variation.
For the, for the front doors?
Yeah, yeah, so there's no change in the buffers. They got a 30-foot structural buffer, so there will be a fence that'll go back there.
Yep, and my
If you want a 10-foot, 7, 8, or 6, is that what you're getting at?
That, that is one of the things that I would request. My understanding is that if you don't give them the front garage doors or the front doors, they have to rework this parking lot, which would impact the buffer and this
No, they would just move it down.
They rework it, it might involve a plan that puts the doors on the back.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, again, so the request for this variance comes and cites a number of things in the neighborhood. It says that it'll be good for the economic development of the area, which arguably will not be, because we live in an area that is saturated with repair facilities. One, this is zoned in C2. C2 allows for automotive repair, minor and major, for retail, for, for consumer vehicles, but not for commercial vehicles. I don't know what this business intent is to reject business for commercial vehicles, given that we have a number of work vehicles that are DOT, CDL-required vehicles that would not be able to be serviced here. And I would love to hear the business plan from these guys to prevent that and from them to not violate zoning efforts. I, I think, I speak for myself and a number of members of the Spring Lakes community that we will do anything to prevent a, a business that is not in keeping with the general area and residential values of Spring Lakes from coming in, because there will, there, I, I expect that a number of residents will start to have noise complaints against this service facility because none of the other repair shops or none of the other things that the applicant cites in their request for variance is a parcel that abuts residential properties. It's all parcels that are commercial-to-commercial properties, and I do not believe that this property would be in keeping with the benefit for the community. I think that it also has a significant impact on devaluing home properties, home values in the Spring Lakes community, which should be something that should be considered by the planning commission, as it is specifically stated in the request for variance, that this will help improve the area. Also note that I have the, the small privilege for working for a vehicle manufacturer, and I have deep concerns that a property of this type of business will be out of business in the next 18 months, largely because the, this is a great idea on paper when you're in COVID and there's a supply chain shortage, tires are hard to find, and people are trying to get in this business. But by the time this business is built, they get it up and running, we'll be in a recession, and we will have 15 other service facilities within a half-mile of this facility. And not only will we have a business here that's not in keeping with the community, but will be a, an empty, vacated building at that period of time, which will be more harmful to the community.
What did you mean when you made the statement that you'd do anything to stop it?
So my expectation is that there will be noise complaints that come when they begin, because we will probably, you know, my, my wife works from home, and her biggest concern is that there will be air ratchets going off all hours of the day, which will interrupt her business. And that is, and again, I have unfortunately not done all the research I need to do to know what constitutes nuisance in this area. But if we have the grounds to file a nuisance complaint, we will file a nuisance complaint. My also
That didn't answer my question.
Sure. I'll talk to Don Skinner. I'll talk to anybody on the commission board and listen to. I'm here today. I'll be here.
I think, I think, I think with the concern is you said you would do anything to stop it. But what, what, how do you define anything?
I will not take any violent action or commit criminal offense or do anything. I, I am an attorney. I will operate within the bounds of the law. My goal is to do this in using the mechanisms at our disposal for the community, to the betterment of the community. That's why I'm here tonight.
You realize this property has been zoned like this since the 80s.
I am aware of that.
Way before everybody else.
Yep, 1981.
What, what business would you say, as a business is going to run on a variation anyway? I can say no to this business.
And could I, could I say Commissioner Futch also lives in Spring Lakes?
I, I'm well aware. He's my
Rocko knows me.
HOA board member. We, what, what we have on the opposite side of Bel Air is we have a law office that does real estate property development. That's, that's a great keeping thing. Across the street, as you pointed out in the photos, you have a bank. You have things that are focused on commercial retail for consumer goods and products. This is automotive services, not entirely in keeping. Yes, I understand that legally definition and how things are zoned, it meets that definition. But there, there are conditions, and it is a limited use, as opposed to any consumer retail that you have in the ordinances that are proposed in anything else, where we wouldn't really necessarily be talking about this kind of stuff. If this was a, a, a convenience store, a, 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 a kids' after-school program center, something for childcare, nursing, anything of that nature, I would not be up here today.
Think if it were a convenience store, you'd still be up here.
You would have a bigger problem.
It'd be a 24-hour convenience store.
We got the Kroger across the way. I live with that.
Well, you, you understand that whoever says this goes away, we send this away, or they change their mind.
Yep.
The idea for what's going to go there is going to come from the business community. We don't
Yeah.
plan what's coming. We evaluate what's coming.
Absolutely.
And for funsies, if you would, go look at Christian Brothers Automotive on Washington Road. It kind of backs up to a neighborhood
Okay.
called Chimney Hill.
Okay.
Ask, you know, stop and knock on the door, ask, is there a noise problem? Because odds, the possibility exists that they will design this building so that the noise is not such that it comes through the walls to y'all's house.
And I surely hope they do, and my, my statement is that if that's not the case, you know, again, the, the community of Spring Lakes will file noise violations and ordinances, and make sure that they do. And, and make sure that they are absolutely in compliance with everything they need to be.
You know, you're not the first one that's come up here making idle threats about something that may or may not be. And this hasn't even gotten to that point yet. However, there's people that work for the county that answer those types of complaints.
Absolutely.
So you're going way beyond the pale before we even get there.
And that's why I'm actually asking that there more, be more questions, and we, we think about this and are deliberate in whether you decide that any variance or any requests by this applicant is granted.
But if it's already zoned, and this is, variance is much more different than having a whole full rezoning. If you've been an attorney, you ought to know that.
I, I, I am well aware of that.
All right, with that, I'm going to ask you to leave the mic from it. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular variation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with any conditions, which I don't see, to disapprove or to postpone until December 15th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file VA 22 dash 11 variation to section 90. Corridor production outlet district at 4160 Columbia Road.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve December 15th, passes five zero. We have no legal matters. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? I would like to thank Board of Education member Kristy Baker for joining us tonight. It's good to see you out. We appreciate your service. And do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to adjourn at 6:47? Believe, 6:00 PM in these chambers.